UbaSutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com.
John, would you...
Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Here.
Supervisor Blazer?
Here.
Supervisor Fuer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Here.
Supervisor Messick?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, Consent Agenda, as matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. Any questions from the board?
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Any questions from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, measure passes. Correspondents, we're going to move the correspondence item to up here. Let me read it here for a second. Oh, we'll move the entire correspondence there. All right, entire correspondence there, and we have someone with public comment on one of the items. Yes, sir. Do we have a card?
Through the chair, yes. His name is Robert Ledford.
Ledford, right there. Thank you.
And basically, I'm here representing the Lever Avenue cul-de-sac residents who were confronted with a problem caused by the emergency gate at Lindhurst High School being opened and allowing through traffic to come through to their campus. Now, as a former teacher for 31 years at Lindhurst High School, I can tell you that the emergency gate was never opened except for during an emergency, okay? And so we're asking, we had a meeting with the principal, and at which time we informed him of the codes that he was in violation of, and he basically said that he would do as he pleases. And we then also, if you have access to the cul-de-sac photo, if you look in the left-hand side below the blue house with the trees, there was a sign there that was removed, and the sign was a no parking on this cul-de-sac sign. And so you can see that I added that to our action motion to basically, the principal said he was going to keep doing what he was doing unless he had a cease and desist order from the county. So that's what we're here requesting, is a cease and desist order to immediately stop using that gate for anything other than emergency gates. And specifically, specifically the principal or any other person with the key, be told that that's an emergency gate only. Also, that the sign be replaced. Now, the signs were paid for by the cul-de-sac residents. They gathered the money, and the county put the signs up for us. We are requesting that this cease and desist order be expedited and moved up, and we had past practices since the time that Lindhurst was built and operating that Olive Avenue was the entry and exit into Lindhurst High School, and Marysville had this knowledge, Marysville Joint Unified School District had this agreement that for the safety of the community, that this was not going to be a gate or entry. And so the last item on our list was make it clear to any future principal, because this is a new man. This new man, principal, he said he's going to do it his way, whatever he wants. So make sure that any future new principal knows, and that Marysville Unified School District knows, that that is not to be opened except for emergencies.
Mr. Ledford, was there an ordinance passed?
I included those ordinance on your paperwork, and the first one specifically named Lever Avenue, and the second one talked about what the consequences were if you were in violation of parking on this street, and you did not, you weren't the resident there. And then also the definition of what is a cul-de-sac. So I included all those items in your paperwork.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And we can't do anything right now, but I think staff can research this and possibly agenda it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you kindly.
Any questions from board?
One question, is the gate routinely opened every day?
Yes.
And so the high school opens and closes?
Yeah, the high school principal.
It was only supposed to be an emergency.
Correct. It's an emergency gate.
How long were you there?
I taught for 31 years.
Okay.
Okay. And I also lived, if you're looking down at the cul-de-sac, the red roof located second house on the left, that's the Ledford household, and my sister now lives there. Okay? Other questions?
No. On the traffic citation part, that's something that the sheriff, is it the sheriff that takes care of that, not CHP? That would be the traffic citations for the illegal parking?
I'm not aware. I'm sorry.
I think that's something that we'll find out about in our research for that. Thank you for the question.
Yep. We appreciate all the questions. The staff will research this and bring it back at the next meeting with a little more information for the board.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for writing and getting up there.
No problem. All right. So how many things in correspondence do we have?
Through the chair, would you like for me to read them?
Sure, why not?
Okay, we got 439-2023, receive independent auditor financial report for South Yuba Water District for calendar year ending December 31st, 2021 and 2022. 452 is the agenda item we just heard. That's a letter from Lever Avenue Concerned Residents regarding Lindhurst High School. 463-2023, letter from Mr. Tom Tucker regarding traffic congestion in Arboga. 470-2023, notice from US Fish and Wildlife Service regarding Endangered Species Act protection to the foothill yellow-legged frog. 489-2022, 23, letter from Feather River Air Quality Management District.
All right. Next item is special presentations. Present a proclamation to recognize the Aging Area, Agency on Aging Area 4's 50th anniversary. Okay. Do we have that? Okay. All right. Clayton Wright. All right.
Board of Supervisors, proclamation honoring Agency on Aging Area 4 on their 50th anniversary. Whereas the Agency on Aging Area 4 will be celebrating their 50th anniversary with an open house on September 28th, whereas the agency, the agency, area, Agency on Aging Area 4, I'll get it, is one of the six original organizations designated by the California Department of Aging, and 10 years later was restructured as a nonprofit joint powers authority. And whereas the agency serves seven counties covering 6,578 square miles, is the largest agency on aging in the state of California. In 1974, the Agency Area 4 began contracted with community agencies, and their first funded services were transportation, well as information referrals. Whereas the Agency on Aging Area 4, under guidance and leadership, expanded services beyond older American act programming, including aging and disability resource connections, case management programming. And whereas the Agency on Aging Area 4 has adhered to its mission by enriching the lives of older adults and people with disabilities by fostering networked support, advocating for individual choice, collaborating with others, ensuring equity, striving to do so with conviction. Now therefore be resolved, the County Board of Supervisors hereby congratulates the Agency on Area 4 on its 50th anniversary and wishes the agency may have any more successful and productive years, hopefully by the next 50.
Thank you very much. Yeah, just want to say thank you very much for all the collaborative efforts, and we look forward to serving our community.
Thank you. All right. Okay.
Recognizing National Suicide Prevention Week. County Viva Board of Supervisor Proclamation, recognizing National Suicide Prevention Week, September 10th, 16th, 2023. Whereas National Suicide Prevention Week is a time in which individuals, organizations, and communities around the county, when their voices can amplify the message that suicide can be prevented. Whereas attitudes and perceptions about aging, behavioral, and mental health challenges, peer pressure, and suicide have a significant impact on individual wellness, willingness to reach out for support and services that can alleviate distress. Whereas it is recognized that people of all ages benefit from common tenets. Whereas knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to talk when someone may be thinking of suicide, and reaching out to local resources are steps everyone can take to care for themselves and others. Whereas cultivating and maintaining wellness is a lifelong pursuit, and individuals of all ages could benefit from integrating wellness into their daily routine to prevent or reduce the severity of a broad range of health and behavioral health problems. And whereas during the week of September 10th through 16th, 2023, the United States recognizes Suicide Prevention Week, providing the opportunity to educate and engage everyone in our community in promoting health and well. Now therefore, the Yuba County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim September 10th through 16th, 2023, as Suicide Prevention Week in Yuba County, and the day of September 10th, 2023, as World Suicide Prevention Day, and urge all citizens to find their role in suicide. Thank you. And are we pushing a school as to providing information on suicide?
Yeah, we do a lot of outreach events. In fact, our staff are going to schools today to talk about a lot of, again, suicide outreach, suicide prevention. My message here today as the behavioral health director is that suicide is both preventable and treatable. I recently came across a study that looked at over 1,500 other studies, and it showed that with just therapy alone, so not including medication, there was a 55% reduction in suicidal thoughts, and a 38% reduction in suicide attempts. So of course, stated treatment really works, right? One of the things that keeps people from seeking treatment, however, is stigma. So we do community events to help combat stigma. I'm going to pass it. See you at the talk without one of those.
Hello, and we do want to invite everyone to be present and watching us at home as well. Please come out to our event that's taking place on Saturday, September 30th. The event is called Bridging Hope. It's a walk for suicide awareness and prevention. This is going to take place here in Marysville at Veterans Park. That's 715 Street. It'll start at 8:00 AM with check-ins. We have over 200 people already pre-registered for this event, but we will be still taking registrations up until the day of the event. We're going to have an opening ceremony at about 9:00 o'clock with keynote speakers, and some of our board supervisors will be joining us as well. Right after the opening ceremony, we'll go ahead and all as a community, walk across the Fifth Street Bridge and back to the park. We'll also have resource tables there available, and some of our therapists will also be there on site. It's a great way for the community to come together and support this cause.
Have we seen a jump in 4H? It boggles my mind that...
Yeah, I think since the pandemic, we've seen more youth having mental health issues. So again, that's something that we're trying to work on with the schools and this event.
Thank you. All right. Next item is 475, receive quarterly update from public safety departments.
Oh, thank you. All right.
Takes the top one.
Morning.
Good morning.
So I'm headlining for this quarter, and the first thing I wanted to do is just thank you for the leadership when it comes to the strategic planning that went on for the county. And so first slide there is the mission and vision statement. And what you do here when it comes to strategic thinking, it does filter down through the rest of the camp. So I just wanted to quickly share with you, we did a revamp on our mission statement in the DA's office to align with the work that the board approved here when it comes to mission and vision. So second slide, the DA's new mission, protect our community by upholding the rule of law through ethical prosecution, making Yuba County a safe place to live, work, play. And again, you know, thank you for your work, what you do on strategic planning for the county. Just wanted you to see, it does filter down. In a lot of ways, it really, the mission of the DA hasn't changed. We just made sure to align the language so that we're really following after what the county's trying to accomplish, which at the end of the day, to make this a place where people want to come to live, to work, and to play. So the DA's role in that is all about public safety, as is the sheriff's probation. So these are the guiding values for the DA's office and how we accomplish that mission. And how we create an office that can do that. But that's, I just wanted to quickly touch on that, those guiding values in the new mission statement. But really what I wanted to focus on today is a slide that looks like this, and talk about the crisis that we have in our state, like homelessness, drug addiction, when it comes to theft. I think all of us know it's completely out of control across our state. We look at places like San Francisco, which, you know, I would say is a canary in the coal mine. With what happens, let this stuff go on rampant, and we can really trace it statewide back to 2014, when the voters were tricked into passing what was called the Safe Neighborhoods and Schools Act, Proposition 47, which reduced most drug and theft crimes down to misdemeanors, which meant that we no longer had a stick to encourage people into treatment. So California has experienced a huge uptick in homelessness since that happened, while the rest of the country dropped 11% homeless population. So I'll say it, though I'm blue in the face, California is in the midst of a failed experiment in public safety. I think we all understand why we would want to lead with treatment, and I think we still do, but the addicted mind is not going to voluntarily go into treatment. We have to provide some sort of incentive to get them there. And we used to do that through the criminal justice system, and Prop 47, realignment, those really took away the levers that we had to provide incentive to get people into treatment. So what's the solution? A group called Golden State Communities has put together an initiative that has been submitted to the Attorney General for ballot statement numbering, probably end of October, beginning of November, will begin the period for gathering signatures. And as the DA, I just want to highlight this for you, sort of preview it. I will be back to talk specifically about the act as an action item, hopefully looking for support. But it's all about reforming realignment and Prop 47 so that it'll work to combat homelessness, drug addiction, theft. So what will it do? Essentially, it'll bring back theft with a prior, or two priors becoming a felony. So if you won't quit stealing, you go to county prison first on the third one, and state prison, fourth one. So again, a very graduated, working within realignment, working within Prop 47 to try and provide a solution for those who just won't quit stealing. The second big thing it does is hard drug possession. So we're not at all talking about cannabis, we're talking about fentanyl, heroin, methamphetamine, drugs like that. It would essentially create a new crime that is called a treatment-mandated felony. So the third, simple drug possession of hard drugs, you'd be eligible for a county jail felony. The focus on that, though, would be to send people into treatment. If they go into treatment, it would get expunged, a lot like we do drunk court now, so it wouldn't stay on their record. They would only end up in the county jail on this third time drug possession if they absolutely refused the treatment. So again, those who are declining services, there would be a stick to try to get them to take the treatment. If after they've been convicted of one of these treatment-mandated felonies, and they come back a fourth time, then it would be eligible for state prison again. Again, that's, you know, treatment's the way to handle someone with a... Again, that's, you know, treatment's the way to handle someone with addiction, but if they're going to keep doing it in order to protect our communities, eventually we have to get back to where we're not letting them run rampant, ruining our public spaces for the rest of us. So finally, when it comes to this bill, it would also have some fixes in there for fentanyl. It would require a warning to people convicted of drug dealing, that they could be charged with murder if they kill someone with the drugs they're dealing. And it would also add fentanyl to the list of crimes that if you're caught with hard drugs and a gun, you can go to state prison. Fentanyl's currently not on that list. Caught with heroin and a gun, you can go to state prison. Caught with fentanyl and a gun, you end up in the county jail maybe. So, any rate, I just wanted to highlight the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act as an initiative that is hopefully coming to theaters near you soon. Any questions?
So I love this act. I'm curious, why two priors, not one prior?
Well, again, I think it's trying to be measured, realizing that we're in California and that not everyone sees eye to eye. So lots of opportunities to turn the ship around before we get to that place. I think it's the idea of two instead of just one.
On your example of forty-seven being the cause of thing, I'm just curious about alternative explanations. So people would say economy or economic downturn, they'd say COVID would be part of the homelessness cause, not Prop forty-seven for that fifty-one percent increase. But on your first slide, or earlier slide, where you have the chart, that one, yes. Is there any other alternative explanation besides Prop forty-seven? Is that the only possible cause?
Given that what California has done different than the rest of the nation since twenty twelve with realignment, twenty fourteen with Prop forty-seven, I think it's the most likely explanation. I don't know of any specific others that have been offered. And California's had a problem with housing prices for much longer than the last fourteen years. So I really don't think that it's that personally. But I mean, it's been dramatic. We've lowered since the height of our prison population was about a hundred and seventy-five thousand inmates in California at one time. And that's not the county jails, that was state prisons specifically. Today, it's probably around ninety-five thousand. So California has lowered its prison population by over a third in the last twelve to fourteen years. And, you know, everyone at the state level is patting themselves on the back, saying, wow, we're saving a whole lot of money by not incarcerating these people in prison. And at the same time, our streets have, well, they just, they moved the problem out onto the streets.
Thank you.
Any further questions? You go ahead.
Yeah, this initiative, is this to the stage of being a bill?
Not, not yet. It's at the stage where they've submitted it to the Attorney General to write the ballot statement. The Attorney General actually gets to name it, you know. So this will probably be called the Unsafe Neighborhoods and Really Dangerous for Schools Act by the time the AG finishes with it. But once that happens, which I think they have until the end of October, then your signature gathering period would start. I think that's, gosh, is it sixty days or six months? I don't, I don't recall. So that, that's the period where I'll be back to talk, to talk more specifically about it.
Okay.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I wanted to thank you for making us aware of this, this measure that, that'll hopefully be before voters. And I look forward to you bringing it back for, for our consideration, so.
How are we different than other counties in person, in prosecuting items?
It, it depends on county to county.
That's, that's what I want, yeah.
One, one example, Riverside. Riverside's still a fairly conservative county, but their jail is completely full of folks that are pending trial on things like murder and rape and trafficking. So someone gets a local county jail sentence, and they, they go straight out onto probation, whereas we still have room in the hand. Between us and LA, we're still willing to prosecute crime. LA is not willing to do it on a lot of things. So, I mean, there's some huge differences county to county, but across the state, the tools have been taken away.
Okay. What are we doing about future crime? There's a term proactive. Are we doing anything to kind of address it before it gets too far?
Well, we do, I mean.
I mean, we're limited in what we can do.
Big picture, we do lots of things to try and address crime before it happens. Through the schools, through trying to support parents. There's all sorts of things that are being done to try to stop crime. I mean, we still offer versions, we still offer drug court. It's just much harder, someone comes in, you know, caught with a little bit of methamphetamine, they essentially get a slap on the wrist and out they go. Getting them to commit to doing a six-month residential treatment, I mean, it's basically impossible. So we're, at this point, forced into a position that the, the folks that are willing to try drug court, fifteen years ago, they would have been that person that possessed meth. Today, they're residential burglars. And it's at that point that we start to have the leverage to get them to address their problem. Like Mr. Weiss, the guy that was the actor in The Mighty Ducks. That got a lot of publicity, went through our drug court. But it wasn't until he was breaking into people's houses that we had the leverage to get him to go to treatment. So I mean, that's, that's a tough place to be because as a community, we're taking risks with public safety, sending, letting people out of the jail to go to treatment that are much further down the road of criminality.
Talking to an assemblyman the other day, he has an interest in redefining the term violent crimes. You know, to me, the rape of an unconscious person is definitely a violent crime, but yet it's not.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's, it's a loaded term in the sense that there's a legal definition in California, a violent crime, which is a fairly short list. Then there's, you know, things that are clearly violent but aren't on that list, such as rape of an intoxicated person, such as domestic violence, assault with a deadly weapon. There's all sorts of things that are violent that aren't considered under California law violent crimes. It's pretty misleading.
Okay. All right, I don't have any further questions. Can we open, any questions for the public? Might as well, while they're here. Do you have a card? Okay, that's fine, come up. I'm kind of curious what the public thinks about all this stuff. We know what the politicians think. Or do they think?
My, my question was a couple of slides back. It looked like there were provisions given to force medicate people against their will.
So.
Is that accurate?
Forced medication, no. When, when someone's found, like, say incompetent to stand trial, a judge gets the decision on whether to force medication for, for folks in that situation.
Because in, in Sacramento, where I used to live, they passed Laura's Law, which all they had to do was deem someone crazy, and they could incarcerate them and force medicate them against their will for six months. So I'm just, it's a.
That describes the Senate and the representatives, crazy.
That, that was the Board of Supervisors passed that, Laura's Law, so.
They also passed a hundred percent pay raise.
That's true. So I just was wondering if that also gave provisions to force medicate people against their will.
No, I think, I think people will be allowed to choose to go to jail instead if they don't want treatment.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you for.
You're welcome. And I think that's something to say, I know, Kendall just had a packet. Okay.
Just wanted to address the packet that I gave you. It has, at the budget hearings, you requested some more numbers on Flock and some crime stats, and that's what I'm providing, along with our end of year report in the magazine. So I didn't give that to you to hijack Mr. Curry's time. But if you have any questions, or perhaps the next quarter, this will give us something to discuss and questions to ask. You know, you all know that I'm available anytime you have questions.
That program seems to be cost effective.
I'm sorry?
That program seems to be cost effective.
The Flock program, absolutely. It's been a huge benefit for us. The, the cases that are cited there, there's a couple homicide and thefts, and those are just kind of the tip of the iceberg as far as what value they bring to our investigations unit.
Okay, you were talking earlier about, this last year, about microphones that will give you additional information on where incidents were happening and that you could even, you were talking about.
There's technology available, gunshot detection, some other things I, that don't really fall within our budget. They're pretty, pretty pricey. It's about twenty-five thousand dollars for a city block. So, you know, that's just the technology that's out there maybe in the future as those prices come down. Something we could look at at this point. It's just not a viable option.
Yeah. Well, this Flock numbers are outstanding. Thank you very much for.
You're welcome. If you have any questions, like I said, I don't want to take up too much time. It's not my, my time to present, but you can call me, text me. Buy me lunch is always a good thing. No, I'm joking.
Were you able to dump those branches?
Through the chair, right?
We were deeper, we, we were routed to the dump, but that's.
So through the chair.
Thank you.
Just a quick definition of a hit on the flock hits. What is that? So the plate comes up with something on record that.
Yes, so there, there's a couple ways. So through the, through the DMV database, through, if it's listed as a stolen vehicle, if it's been reported previously as a stolen vehicle, that would be a hit. If it is a vehicle that is involved with a crime. So we, the database consists of the DMV database, stolen vehicle, VSBS system, and then also other entities, law enforcement agencies can develop their own hot list. So if we have a homicide suspect or a suspect in a, in a serious crime, and we're looking for that individual, we know the license plate of the vehicle, that could be entered into the database as well, and that would give us a hit. So there's multiple ways to get a hit. There are multiple databases that we use. We can also collaborate with other agencies and use their databases, and they can use ours.
An amazing amount of hits.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
Yeah, so I was out on patrol yesterday, and I think, you know, I don't often get to do that, but just in the short time I was out there, we had two, two hits on stolen vehicles. So it, it's nonstop. Now, we don't catch them all, but we, as you can see, it's, it's made a dramatic impact on the, on the number of stolen vehicles recoveries in our area. It's still going to happen, but it gives us another useful tool to, you know, to get somebody's property back or to recover and hold accountable those that are responsible for it.
Thanks.
All right, any further questions? Thank you very much, Sheriff, appreciate it. All right, public communications, I think that's where we're at now.
Any person may speak about any subject of concern, provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of fifteen minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to comment, please use the raise hand function or star nine if participating on a phone. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading. And through the chair, we do have three cards. The first one we have is Tony Farley.
You get to be a regular. I'll give you a frequent.
Yeah. I'm playing fire from South Sari County. New City, thank you, for starting, thank you, County Commissioner Kevin, thank you, County Council, attorney lawyer, thank you, Andy District One, John District Five, Gary Bradford, District Four, Seth Lord, District Two, and down, Don Blazer, District, one, three, two. And thank you, Rachel, thank you, DA, that guy. Thank you for breaking guys. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff, and thank you, everybody, thank you for your service.
All right. Card number two.
Second person we have is Charles Sharp.
Start the clock.
Gentlemen, good morning, Charles Sharp, I'm in Oregon House. I have something for all the board members. County Council and Kevin Mallon. And we have a Food and Water Festival coming up on the thirtieth, which should be really good for people getting to see what we have up at the foothills, food and water, that kind of thing. But I'm here to talk about Supervisor Vasquez. I believe you have bought property in Lake Francis, is that correct? Okay, well, welcome to the, welcome to the Yuba foothills. For everybody in the foothills, fire is a major concern. And here is a foothill visitor guide, which I handed out to you. After it was apparent that the water would be flowing again, Paul McGovern was inspired to organize this event. Twenty years ago, fires were more gentle. You could see the fire coming from miles away and had time to get out of the way. This is no longer true. Fires now burn with great ferocity, move fast through the dry brush. The nature of fire has changed. Last July, the Winding Fire quickly burned eighty acres and several structures. Some people tried to flee, but they found getting out difficult. A year and a half ago, the Fire Safety Council received a grant from the Yuba Water Agency for a roadside clearing project. This is a good idea. However, so far, I don't think much has happened with that, and we need more progress in that area, I think. The valley is threatened by flooding, which is being well addressed. The foothills need the same level of attention to our fire. The Fire District volunteers and the chiefs are doing an excellent job of responding to incidences, focusing on first responder calls and house fire incidences. However, much more needs to be done. Supervisor Messick, I've, I've seen glimpses of outstanding leadership from you. This is your district and your consultant constituents. Please find your, find your way on your terms and do, do what needs to be done to bring better fire protection to the foothills. People are looking to you to take the lead for more robust fire protection. We all know, we all know what the hazards are. What we need is a comprehensive fire mitigation plan for the foothills, which brings all the various agencies and organizations all working together with the best fire protection possible. Thank you for your time.
Charles, okay, we have the next, next one. Thank you.
Through the chair, we have no more cards. The other cards we have are on agenda items listed under county departments.
Okay, all right. County departments, first one, County Administrator. Approved Amendment Number Three to the Contract with Brian Davis, Public Defender Services and Authorized Security Execute. My goodness, Ian.
Good morning, Chair Vasquez and fellow board members. For anyone that doesn't know me, my name is Ian Scott, and I work in the County Administrator's Office. Before you today is Amendment Three to the Contract for Public Defender Services with Public Defender Brian Davis, who is here today. This item is the results of a research project conducted in the CEO's office to determine the competitiveness of the current public defender contract in the context of a pending contract expiration at the end of this fiscal year. Based on this work, it was concluded that the public defender would be unable to meet their contractually obligated staffing requirements without an adjustment to the current monthly contract of seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred, seventy-eight monthly. The current contract allocation was determined to be unable to support competitive wages in the public defender's office, resulting in significantly reduced ability to retain qualified attorney staff, as unlike County Council and District Attorney. As unlike County Council and District Attorney, the Public Defender's Office staff are not county employees, and as such, do not receive a county benefits package. Adjusting the current monthly contract to 90,000 retroactive beginning of this fiscal year and further to 94,500 for next fiscal year enables a one-year extension of the current contract. Additionally, Public Defender Brian Davis has agreed to work with the county on the implementation of a new software system that has resulted in significant efficiencies in the DA's office and will assist the Public Defender's ability to securely and efficiently share case files with the DA, the court, and other stakeholders. This will be the subject of a future board item. Brian Davis and I both are here to answer any questions your board may have. Thank you very much.
Any questions to the board? No questions on the board. Any questions from public? I'll bring it back to the board for motion.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion in a second.
Oh, second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Measure passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, 462, approve and award an agreement to Youth for Change for supervised visitation services for families with juvenile dependency cases managed by Child and Adult Protective Service for the period of May 1st, 2023 to April 30th, 2026. And authorize the chair. Okay.
You're doing good. So good morning, Chair and members of the board. My name is Tony Gordon. I'm the Deputy Director for Yuba County Child Adult Protective Services at the Health and Human Services Department. And I am coming before you today to request that the Board of Supervisors approve and award the Health and Human Services Department Agreement for Supervised Visitation Services to Youth for Change and authorize the chair to execute. Now maintaining and supporting a strong relationship between children and their parents is a core value of CPS in relations to the visitation process. It's an essential factor in reunification of children with their families during what usually is a difficult time for everyone that's involved. Parent-child visitation is crucial to strengthening and maintaining family relationships, and it's been linked to positive outcomes, including improved child well-being, less time in and out of home care, and an accelerated reunification process. Frequent and consistent visiting is the most natural setting, helps mitigate the trauma and removal and the sense of loss experienced by parents and children while they're separated. Visitation is a key factor for timely reunification and other forms of permanency. And beyond the actual contact and relationship maintenance, one goal of visitation should be to keep parents in a parenting role. On average, the visitation center schedules approximately 300 visits per month, and then we provide of those 300, about 200 of those services are provided each month for visitation with our families. Now during 2020, we had a change in our visitation protocol calls as a result of the COVID-19 guidelines. And in order to support court ordered visitations, we partnered with a local agency to provide visitation services for our families. And those individuals providing the services had the equivalency of our current highest level of social worker threes that we that we have in our facility. And in our facility, those social workers do not provide the visitation services. So it's a lower class that provides that service. These individuals providing the service, we saw an increase in the quality of coaching, participation, as well as feedback from our legal partners, which included Judge Givens and local attorneys representing the youth and parents in the CPS cases. They felt that the reports were more detailed as well, and it gave them a better picture of what was taking place in the visitation service process. On a monthly basis, I attend a Blue Ribbon Commission on a month with the courts and CPS so that we can identify and improve permanency, well-being, and fairness outcomes for children and families in Yuba County. And it was important for us to solicit the feedback and gain the court's insight on the impact of this enhanced service. And it was quite unanimous that with this enhanced services, it was beneficial to our families. After receiving this feedback from the commission, we also spoke with our internal staff, human resources, and the Local One representatives in order to develop a plan that was beneficial for our families and the service delivery of staff. After feedback from staff, human resources, and Local One, it was determined that a challenge for our families was to buy into trust and commit to a visitation program if they are being overseen by the same social workers or agency who detain their children. We felt that having an independent third party will help families develop a plan to build and strengthen their interactions and relationships with their children and enhance stability and aid in the prevention of reentry into the child welfare system. This plan that we developed includes an assessment of the family's strengths and needs, targeted parenting skills, short and long-term goals, and proposed activities for skill building strategies that include, but it won't be limited to education and coaching to build positive interactions with the children, building positive parenting skills, engaging families in evidence-based practices to enhance parent-child relationships, and to build and enhance parenting skills and improve parent-child relationships through coaching visits while they're being provided services. In November 8, 22, the Board of Supervisors approved Health and Human Services' request to solicit proposals for a qualified agencies to provide this visitation service. We received two proposals and upon evaluation of the submitted proposals, we determined that Youth for Change met all criteria and exhibits the experience to partner effectively with our agency to provide therapeutic evidence-based programs in the trauma-informed practices. Now, exciting piece of this process that came out of the back is that Youth for Change in itself actually submitted a grant proposal to provide PCIT training for their staff. And PCIT stands for Parent-Child Interaction Therapy, and they'll be providing that service. And so basically what it is, is their PCIT is conducted through coaching sessions during which the parent and the children are in a playroom. And while the therapist is in an in an observation room watching the parent interact with the children through a one-way mirror or a live video feed. Parents wear a bug in their ear, and this device through which the therapist can provide in-the-moment coaching and skills as parents learn to manage their children's behavior. Youth for Change will incorporate, again, that into their program, and our facility already has the infrastructure in place to for this additional service. I hope this paints an overview of the contract and how we have made this service part of our desire to fulfill the pillar of the county strategic plan, which is in regards to county service, which is to deliver convenient, responsive, and reliable services with a personal yes-to-UBA experience. And I also feel that this encompasses a core operation value for adaptability, which is we believe to stay responsive to the needs and expectations of those we serve, we must remain flexible and encourage innovation in what we do and how we do it. This will be a three-year contract with a price of $1,319,602. There are no general funds associated with this. This will be all state and federal fundings that's associated with child welfare services. And I'm happy to answer any questions of the board, and if there are none, then I would request that the Board of Supervisors again approve and award Health and Human Services Department Agreement for Supervised Visitation Services to Youth for Change and authorize the chair to execute.
Questions from the board? No questions from the board? All right, I have one question. Are you involved with the schools? You know, everything you've described is, you know, aimed at helping families better parent. And there's a lot of things happening right now in the school systems, which is dividing the children and the parents. And, you know, this is, that's counterproductive as far as I'm concerned, but.
There are preventive, there are preventive programs in place, but as far as this, this, this particular program or for child welfare services, those are ordered mandated services that we are required to provide. You know, our agency does provide and provide services through wellness programs. We do partner with other agencies, Yuba County of Office of Education. We're having a lot of discussions with them as they provide prepare their wellness centers. There are programs that are available. When I was on the First Five Commission, I know First Five has a parenting program that they do with parents. And so there's a lot of those things that are to be developed, but that falls mostly under Yuba County of Office of Education takes the lead on a lot of those.
Okay, so they're providing that information to the school districts, you're saying?
As far as what information are you talking?
You're reinventing, reinventing the wheel. The the child and the parent are you can't break that. And and that's something that schools are trying to do right now, which.
Yeah. And again, our our parameters is health and services, not the not for Marysville, Joy, or the education for Yuba County.
All right. Any public comment on this? Bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion.
Oh, second.
And a second? Any further comments from the public? All those in papers, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'll be talking to you later. Board of Supervisors, appoint one at-large representative to Yuba County Commission of Aging for term ending in July 23rd to 2024. Two applicants have received have been received, one from Mrs. Margaret Fowler and one from Mr. Wendell Peters. Mary, I understand we have we have questions. Do we have questions?
Yes, we do. We do have a card. Name is Margaret Fowler.
Okay.
Good morning. I'm here to demonstrate what I have to offer to the community, to the committee. Good morning, respected members of the Yuba County Board of Supervisors. I'm delighted to be here today to participate in a particularly in the presence of Supervisor John Messick from District Five, who clearly has a vested interest in the well-being of our district. I am Margaret Fowler, the founder and coordinator of Seniors on the Go program in Dobbins, operating under a local nonprofit after our area's need of my program was recognized. The program was adopted to help me expand activities and services. This expansion now encompasses a firewood program, housing connections, and a dedicated point of contact for seniors to address their day-to-day needs throughout the Yuba foothills. Over a year ago, I initiated our monthly senior meetups, providing not only nutritious meals, but also opportunities to for enrichment and networking while also identifying and addressing their specific needs. More than 100 seniors have participated in these gatherings, allowing me to establish lasting relationships with them. My motivation for this program arose from a profound awareness of the pressing need for support and networking within our senior community. Furthermore, I have collaborated with various supporting agencies, disseminate information about available financial benefits, thus promoting continued independence among seniors. These efforts have fostered connections between our seniors and vital support programs. In cases involving individuals' disabilities, I have worked diligently within the community to secure resources, including construction of ramps and donation or loan of necessary equipment. My commitment to this cause is unwavering, and I am dedicated to its continued success. Thank you for your time, and please consider me for being part of the Yuba County Advisory Committee on Aging.
Through the chair, we do not.
He sent me a text this morning. Apparently thought the thing was on the 13th. So both of, both of the applicants are very community-minded people. And I'm going to meet with Wendell next week and have lunch with him. And we have other opportunities and other appointments to make, so I'm gonna let you guys make the decision. They're both great people in my district. They're both great people in my district, willing to serve the community. And we've had several people step up and fill these positions for the county. So I'm just proud of, really proud of my district and the people stepping up to fill these, not only the District Five positions, but the at-large positions.
If Mr. Messick is deferring, I will nominate Ms. Fowler.
I will second, and I want to thank Ms. Fowler for coming today.
Thank Mrs. Fowler for her efforts up in the hills. It's a, it needs everything it can get up there. All right, we have a nomination in a second, first and a second. All, any comments from the public? Any more comments? All right. All those in papers, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Ms. Fowler, welcome. All right. 466, Community Development Services, receive an update on the West Linda Community Needs Assessment Project. Wow, that's a mouthful. Provide direction. Okay.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Downs. I'm your Business Engagement Manager through Community Development. I'm through the chair. As respect to our community member's schedules, I wanted to ask if it would be okay to switch 456 and 450, or sorry, 466 and 467. I have both of those presentations for you today. Is that?
Sure, we'll, we'll do the, do that after 466, okay?
So I can go ahead with 467. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think we can do that. It seems like you're the Energizer Bunny. You're everywhere.
My pleasure. Thank you for the opportunity to be everywhere. Okay, so again, I'm gonna go ahead and present on item 467. And that is our county-funded foothill community-supported food system project. So in partnership with our consultant team, which was Julian Branston, Lon Hadamia, and Stephen Danbeck, we are going to be co-presenting, co-collaborating today on the context by which the project was started, a summary of the needs assessment that was recently completed. We have a couple of recommendations to share with you that are both in the report and in our presentation, and most excitingly, new projects and partnerships that have been generated by this work. So in the spring of 2022, the Yuba County Foothill Farmers and partner agencies like Blue Zones Project Yuba Sutter, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, approached your board in an open meeting to invite the county to invest in a foothill localized food system and assess the viability of actually creating a Yuba County-based food hub. So with that being said, a food hub, I want to provide a couple clarifying definitions here. So a food hub is defined by a place that is where like local produce comes to be aggregated, lightly processed, and distributed to the community. So you can imagine like a large warehouse type of facility with conveyor belts, loading docks, and potentially light processing equipment. Comparatively, a food hall is typically a facility that's located in more of an urban core with features like a small shop or food court, sometimes a market, and truly creates a place for community gathering. So you could envision like the Embarcadero in San Francisco or the Pike's Plate Market in the state of Washington. And lastly, a food system, which you'll hear us talking a lot about, is really the network of growing and distributing the food. So the food hub and food hall are just elements of that system. Okay, so staff worked really closely with our community stakeholders, businesses, and farmers to more really deeply understand this ask. What we discovered was that before making investments into a physical facility like a food hub, we wanted to have a better understanding of the following. Farmers. Who and where are the existing farmers, especially in our foothill community? Do they have the capacity or desire to expand? And food. What and how much is being grown? And how is it currently being distributed to institutional partners or purchasers like schools, hospitals, local restaurants? A facility, what types of infrastructure are needed from meat processing to food warehousing, vegetable washing and chopping? Which types of facilities would serve the need and where could that be located? And lastly, education. Are there educational opportunities that would support the growth and stability? Are there educational opportunities that would support the growth and stability of farmers? Are there educational organizations like our schools that would like to put local food on their cafeteria menus? And do farmers and agritourism businesses need or want to have more access to education to create a successful business? Thus, the framework of the needs assessment was created around these four categories. So as we launched the project, the consultant team quickly began work identifying the key leaders, farmers, and local businesses, and other stakeholders in each of these different project areas, like I said, food, farmer, facility, and education. Over the next year, surveys were collected from farmers, ranchers, and institutional purchasers, like those schools, restaurants, and hospitals, while the community meetings gathered together to talk about their existing production and where the consumption channels could be, who's growing it and who's buying it. We certainly identified many opportunities for growth and then relevant challenges in these conversations. You can see here in front of you, this is a complex network of supply, demand, logistics, infrastructure, and probably most importantly, relationships. Traditionally, food grown in our local community is exported in the masses, and we, as local consumers, only consume 2% of what we consume is usually actually grown in our own region, which is pretty significant when we like to call ourselves the farm to fork capital of the nation here in the Sacramento Valley. This creates a tremendous market opportunity to reinforce local supply chains, creating a more stable food system, and really prosperous opportunities for our local small agricultural businesses. That concludes my piece of it. I'm going to come back and wrap it up, but I wanted to provide that framework and introduction for you. And next, I'm going to invite Julian Branston, which was our lead consultant on the project, to talk a little bit more about the needs assessment and then some recommendations.
Good morning, everyone. Nice to be here, and thank you very much, Rachel. Thanks to everyone. So as Rachel mentioned, our report contains quite a number of recommendations, 40 in all, and so is not to intimidate the continuing efforts in building a food system. We've categorized these recommendations by priority, risk, the phase in development, and also the cost. So for example, with priority in, in our report, we recommend a planning phase before we do anything about implementing a food system. Do a lot more planning first, so that's one way that we categorize our recommendations. The next one is risk. Would the food system fail if the recommendation did not take place? The third one is a simple flag on whether the recommendation is going to be a planning activity or an implementation activity. And the fourth one is cost. Some of our recommendations rate highly because they have no cost associated with them. As we'll see in the next slide, some of our recommendations are already taking place, coalition of farmers and agritourism businesses and foothills. But also, there are some recommendations that score high, but do come with a cost. So I'm going to lightly touch on some of these recommendations, and with Stephen Danbeck, who's, who's coming after me, he'll be able to go a little bit more in-depth in some of them. Just to note that the recommendations on this particular slide, most of them are free. There's already spontaneous activities associated with. So I got a lightly touch on three of them. The first one being to establish an organization with vision and mission and values. And this is something that we would want to do as part of the planning phase, because we want that kind of identity and a branding, if you like, of the food system to take place before an implementation activity of finding a facility to actually aggregate and prepare food. The next one is develop a relationship with a mid-sized farmer. This is because most of the farmers that we spoke to are small scale. It would need a little bit of adjustment on what they do, commonly do right now, to change their business model from their current practice to start being the providers for food system. And a mid-sized farm in the initial phase of operation will prove stability in the volume of produce that a food system would require. And then the developer workforce opportunities in the foothills. There are two possible opportunities here to collaborate. First, with Health and Human Services on the Cal Works program, a food system in the foothills. Using Cal Works, we could provide employment opportunities to foothill communities. The second opportunity is to work with the Sutter, Yuba Sutter Food Bank, and engage in, with them in the Cal Fresh program, and bring fresh produce to food insecure populations in the foothills. Thank you.
Any project of this sort has tangible results and intangible results. I want to touch on some of the intangibles, because some of the recommendations Julian just mentioned have already started to coalesce. In the process of speaking to so many people, it became clear how many great individuals there are out there and how determined they are. You just saw one, Margaret Fowler, and thank you for the support that you've offered her. These individuals often work in isolation. So the other thing that we've seen is that without being pulled together, their efforts are not optimized. And already in the process of bringing people together, some things have happened, and I want to share some of those. A key thing is your partners that already exist. The Blue Zones Project shouldn't be underestimated. They're driving into the farm-to-school realm, I think with a firm objective of being a true farm-to-school community before that sun sets, which is quite ambitious. And the other thing that they've done, which I hope you take close note of, is the development of a food policy council, which could be a pillar of pulling together a true food system. Other great leadership that we've encountered is in the food bank. It's beginning to emerge as Maria gets up to speed. I think she'll be a key player. The North Yuba Water District has changed the whole culture up in, up in the north there. And I want to also talk about the local people like Margaret. We have two farmers groups up there, one that already existed, that has become much stronger. Charles Sharp showed you a brochure and announced the upcoming Food and Water Festival, partly to celebrate the successes of the North Yuba Water District. These are partly the result, a catalyst, a catalyzation of the focus groups that we had, farmers coming together. Another farmers group is actually forming a nonprofit, and I'll swing back to them in a minute. And then there's some ranchers, a bunch of ranchers, Jim Gates is here. They've been working together for a decade, Placer, Nevada, Yuba County, trying to solve this intractable problem of a meat processing facility. They were the, the most active group of respondents to the needs assessment, and we'll hear more about that in a minute. And then, not to forget the CDFA. The, the CDFA has already provided grants for the farm-to-school direction, and is working in conjunction with the Blue Zones and the school districts that are being pulled together by the Blue Zones, to maybe propose a regional grant for a food system, you know, a farm-to-school food system. But maybe the most, I should be putting these forward, so there we go, USDA grant application, there you go. We've already applied for two. I say we, the, again, the, the magic of talking to people and pulling them together has already created a next phase from the needs assessment. Potentially, there are two grants. One, as Rachel mentioned, for a food hub. This is put together by one of the local farming groups with Yes Charter Academy to create actually a community-based center and food hub up in Oregon House. So that's a USDA grant. And the second is from the other farmers group to, the application is already going in, and we should know within the month, for a follow-up to the needs assessment, which would be a business plan and maybe some help in funding, a food hall, which could occur up in the foothills and/or in Marysville. Thank you. I guess thank you for already stimulating things. By, by putting out the money for this needs assessment, already pieces are coming together, and coalitions are being formed that are fruitful. Thank you.
Through the chair, the food hall is going to be in all of hers, you said?
No, but that's a good idea. I know that's a joke, Seth, but in fact, the, the other thing that's happened is the MONG community has really come together through this, because the, most of the food that we're now in a very slow way bringing to the schools, the schools are coming up to speed, and most of that food is shuttling through the MONG community. So they're already reshuffling their thinking about how to not have to do five farmers markets a week and actually produce enough product for our schools.
I was curious, on the MONG community, what is the production amount approximately that they produce?
So the, the, the production, it's so many things to say about it. One is that the limitation they currently have is land. Land is a huge question. And this is where the resource, a conservation district could be, be helpful, also Yuba County. The ownership of the land limits them, but primarily what limits them is that they, they typically serve farmers markets. And so when they go to the farmers markets, and it's incredibly exhausting work that they go through, they're only growing enough to fill the table five days a week. But if they're going to feed all the kids in Marysville Joint Unified School District, probably some of those farmers will stop growing 20 different things and grow three, and do it at a, at a cost-effective way and with less cost of sales and exhaustion for themselves. Thank you.
All right, we, we, we've got a comment on this side. Are we going to hold the comments till, till the end of the presentation here? And
Go right ahead, Mr. Chairman, if you have a comment to make. I have a few observations that I'd like to make.
We have somebody on the, on the, that has, and we'll go ahead and let you go. You go first.
You want me to go first? Okay, good. Again, I'm Lon Hatamia. I served as an advisor to the consulting team here. As you all well know, I'm a third-generation farmer from Yuba County. In addition, I headed up the agency, the Ag Marketing Service at USDA, that oversees food hub development nationally. So I've developed some expertise in this area, also co-authored the Secog project a number of years ago on the development of food hubs in the region. And more recently, I just completed a study for the yellow food hub network that we believe the Yuba food hub can feed into in terms of the strengthening the local supply chain. Let, let me make one observation, and I really want to just keep my comments very brief about this, but just to put this in context. According to the Ag Census, the most recent Ag Census from USDA, there are about 794 farms in Yuba County. Out of that, there 562 are considered small, or less than 50,000 in terms of revenue that they generate. So there's a huge opportunity here in Yuba County. And I'm not looking at it just in terms of agricultural production, but as an economic base. As you all well know, agriculture is our foundation in Yuba County. We could build upon that by supporting smaller growers with newer opportunities that, that both Stephen and Julian have laid out for you. So I, I just wanted to mention that fact, and because of the creation of a food hub and the food network within Yuba County, we can improve the quality and availability of local food. We've seen in studies nationally, but also regionally, that school districts are in great need of, of better quality food, but you know, they have only the ability to buy what's available. Again, we think we can create an opportunity here locally that provides local farmers with local markets that shore up the local economy. I think that's what we all are looking to do. Again, we really believe that this is an investment in rural and disadvantaged areas. And not only does Yuba County benefit, but the neighboring counties benefit as well. Neighboring counties like Nevada, Placer, Sutter, have growing numbers of smaller farmers with less opportunity to sell into markets. And so having the Yuba food hub and network established, we could be the focal point for many of those farmers as well, too. So those are the observations I wanted to make. It's been really a pleasure to work with both Julian and Stephen on this, and as you can see, there's been quite a bit of work and enthusiasm developed because of this. One last comment I want to make, these, these issues have percolated up through the community. These did not come from our recommendations, they all came through comments and, and interest and certainly activity within the community. And so you've got an active and vibrant community that's willing to advance this effort into the future. So thank you for the opportunity to, to work on this, but hopefully to focus on this into the future.
I'm going to wrap it up for you, and then we'll move to questions and comments. So again, in conclusion, we just want to say thank you to the board for approving the funding for this project, which initially came through Health and Human Services Cal Works Program, through a memorandum of understanding with community development, which allowed me to lead the project in partnership with the consultants. And so in conclusion, we're glad to report that not only was the project on time and on budget, exciting news there, but we really accomplished the goal that we set out to meet, which was establishing a well-researched foundation for the community stakeholders, our businesses, and our farmers, to guide them forward as they seek out continued state and federal implementation funding, as they mentioned previously, through CDFA and then USDA as well. And so glad to give it back to your board for questions, comments, et cetera. And then I know there's a couple folks from the public that have also joined us in support of the project today as well. Oh, I'm sorry, one last comment, I apologize. I also wanted to say that we did create a standalone project webpage. I forgot to mention that. So the study is published online for everyone. There is a scannable QR code that people can pull up that webpage, and it is yes to yuba.com/uba food system as well. So now I'm done, I promise. Thank you.
Through, through the chair. So very exciting. Thank you for all the people who are working on this, and I think there's a lot of potential in, in many different areas here. And so it sounds like next steps are really waiting for kind of maybe some state and federal funding. Are there any other next steps from a county perspective that we should be looking at while we're kind of waiting on that? I guess that's my question.
I think that's a great question. So there are, as the team mentioned, there are two grants in the works right now with CDFA and USDA that they are looking forward to hearing back more on. As far as the county piece of it, there are recommendations in the needs assessment that if the board wanted to provide direction for staff to, you know, seek out opportunities for that, we certainly can. However, I think that the summary here today is that we accomplished what we set out to in the needs assessment.
Thank you.
I have a question. That's fine. They're talking about farmers, a number of farmers. MONG's been farming ever since they've been here from, from Cambodia and Laos, and they need to get together in an organization and pull the numbers. And until they can get more people together, I think we're going to have a hard time, you know, providing anything for them, because we really want to know what we're, what we're working with out there and what the needs are.
Thank you, Supervisor. I also believe Stephen Danbeck wanted to comment on the question about recommendations, as well as I know he has a strong relationship with some of the MONG farmers, so perhaps you could comment on that as well.
I messed with it next time.
Well, just to say, what, what is the Well, just to say, what is the follow-up? We mostly wanted to present what happened, and lots of good things happened, but I really wanted to ask more. Because if we don't move forward, things could fall down a little bit. I'd like to make a direct ask, and this is mostly through John, perhaps. The meat processing side of things is incredibly opportunistic. It would be, it's a hard lift. They had, nobody succeeded in central California, but the need is intense, and the benefit to Yuba County could be extraordinary. So my suggestion would be to work together in the next week or two to see if there's a follow-up that could happen with the meat processing side of things. And then the second one is coordinating all these wonderful entities like Margaret, like the Food Bank, like Health and Human Services, so that we can provide more coordinated support for the needy. We know the most about up in the foothills, but it's true throughout Yuba County and Sutter as well. So those are actually two asks. I don't know how we, I didn't tell my partners that I'd be asking this, but I think there is an opportunity for the county supervisors to reach out and goose this thing forward a little bit.
Any comments from board?
Yeah, I have a comment through the chair. So I wanted to thank you guys for the presentation and all your work and effort you put into it. And I wanted to thank the rest of the board because you guys approved this before I came on. So I was at the meetings last year when you guys approved the food hub, and I know there was some controversy and things. So just want to thank you guys for approving that funding, and then thank you guys for actually implementing and doing it.
Now that you mention it, John, you know, this is the same situation as North Yuba Water. It's just a question of getting them together as a group to help themselves. We don't have any idea of numbers, you know, and whatever you can do to refine that presentation as far as the things available, that gives us better basis for making decisions. Got your work cut out for you, John. Any further questions? All right. Are we ready for a comment?
Yes, the first person through the chair is Jim Gates.
Thanks for coming down, Jim. We appreciate it.
Talk right at me because I don't hear, okay?
Okay.
You want to yell at me, you can yell, I won't get offended. I'm Jim Gates, Nevada County Free Range Beef. By way of introduction, so you don't think I'm a carpetbagger, my people settled out here at Springdale out of the wagon train 1871, and we'd still be in Yuba County if it hadn't been for Pearl Harbor and what happened after that. So I'd be standing here looking at you as Yuba County Free Range Beef, but that's the way it is. They asked me to come up here and talk about food security and how bad we need this. This will allow that for all of our local community, not just Yuba or Nevada, but everybody north and south, east and west. The proof of that is that when the COVID hit in 2020, if you went around Grass Valley and Nevada City, there was one company delivering beef to feed our local community, meat. The big companies either couldn't or wouldn't deliver, and you went in the store and the shelves were empty. This has the ability to solve that problem, and it is a real problem, okay? The need for this is so dire that for my little company, I am now scheduling cattle into the processors that haven't even been born yet. We're three years out. If we've ever built a facility here for local processing of beef and other animals, you'll be scheduled out four years the day you open the door. I have a neighbor that's a pork producer. You get his animals processed, they leave Grass Valley, they go to Orland, but since Orland doesn't cut and wrap, they've got to go to Petaluma, and then they're hauled home. So before anybody can buy a piece of local bacon, it's gone 562 mile. And then you look at the cost of it, and you want, well, nobody can afford it. Well, of course, nobody can afford it when gas continues to just go up through the roof. We've been at this 20 years now. Roger Ingram, which I don't know if you guys know him or not, was a farm advisor for Placer, Nevada, and then Placer, Nevada, Yuba and Sutter. At the end of, we've been at this 20 years. The need has not got any less. It's got more and more, what do I want to say, important to feed our local people.
Okay.
And the only way to do this is for us to build it right here, and we need the jobs and the money to stay right here.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
All right. Thank you for listening.
Second person we have is, I believe it's Marie Ferny.
Hello, Marie Caphernay. Haven't been here for a long time. Good day to you all. So what is the relationship between a meat processing facility and the success of the North Yuba Water District? Straightforward, clear to me. Now that irrigation water delivery has been restored in hills, and the surface could be greatly expanded in the coming years, there will be more people on their five acres that see value in keeping the area around their house green. Fire danger, we all understand this now. Green pastures don't burn, said Charlie Matthews last year, and it's still true today. Then, once you have green spaces around your house, you may, in good foothill living style, want to bring in some grazers so that you don't have to mow every Saturday. Looking at my husband, he seems to like it. Livestock tends to reproduce, and at a certain point, you're going to need that local meat processing facility to make your dream of producing local food and live off your land a sweet reality. Expanded irrigation services will also attract more local farmers, and more local farmers make for more beneficial use of this water, and that will make it easier for North Yuba Water District to hang on to our water rights. Case closed. So, dear Board of Supervisors, and I mean that, please support this project to attract more successful farming and a vibrant local food scene. The North Yuba Water District will benefit from it, as will we all. And the vision that Yuba County had in the early fifties-
Yeah. All right.
Next caller we have through the chair is Julie Hart.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I am a small farmer in Yuba County. I produce rabbits. I also produce beef and pork, but rabbits are my primary business. And processing is my biggest problem. So I currently produce about 300 rabbits a month, and all of my purchasers require licensed processing. And this is true of most small livestock producers, whether they're producing turkeys or, you know, ducks or whatever it is. If they want to expand their production, all they have to have licensed processing. I currently take a load of rabbits to Turlock. That's the closest processing I can get. And I have to be there at eight o'clock in the morning, which means I leave at 4:30 in the morning, which means I have to load the rabbits the night before. And it's a 15-hour day for me because I take them down there, they have to be processed, and they have to be chilled before they can leave there. That means I have to hire someone to take care of my animals at home while I'm gone. And this is, has been a major obstacle for me to be able to expand, even though I've got the market for my product, to be able to expand my business to actually make a good living at what I do. And this is a problem for all small livestock producers, whether they're producing goats or whether they're producing turkeys. This is a big problem, and this money for processing all leaves our area. It doesn't support our area at all. It's my number one cost, even more than the food for the animals that I raise. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we had a time-specific. Okay. All right. Raise your hand on work. Do we, are we going to do? All right, Charles. I thought you'd been up one time already. Not on this subject. Okay.
About the food hub, and fundamental to the food hub is, of course, water. And I think that was one of the inspirations behind Stephen's idea to do a food hub, but seeing that we would have water available to grow things. And, you know, cultivated areas don't burn, or they act as a natural fire pit. The more farming and cultivated areas we can have, the better it is for our fire protection, too. And also, the water district is providing water, but we need more water than is currently being available. So that's a work in progress. And I, so that's just, we need more and more water. And what we really need to do is how much water will we need to cover all these potential uses for the next 20 years? We don't know that yet. And I would like to somehow see how we could find out what that is.
Any further comments? All right. Yeah, Rachel, do you have anything further? Okay, so you covered 466. Yeah, 467. We're about 466. Okay. That's what I asked, you know? You're going to do 466 now. Is that correct?
Do you like me to do 466, or there was another agenda item in the middle of the two?
Yeah.
466?
466.
Okay. I can do that. All right. Thank you again to our team for coming, and thank you to those who spoke. I'll move on to item 466.
That's- She just wanted to do one.
There we are. Sorry, little technical swap over here. Again, for the board, Rachel Downs, I'm your Business Engagement Manager, coming to you from Community Development. I again have the pleasure of sharing with you today about another project, which was our West Linda Community Service Hub needs assessment on the one-acre county-owned parcel adjacent to Cedar Lane Elementary School and the Affordable Housing Project in West For those maybe a little less familiar with the project site, I'll provide a very brief history. The county acquired the land approximately 10 acres that were vacant in West Linda a number of years ago. It was an ideal site for future housing development as it was close to services, transportation, and a largely underutilized property in an existing residential neighborhood. As development plans evolved, the county deeded the majority of the property over to the Regional Housing Authority, who partnered with the Pacific West Companies to design and construct a now 149, I believe, unit, affordable housing complex with 108 units of income-qualified units, as well as 41 permanent supportive housing units. During this process, though, the county retained about one acre of land on the northwest corner of the property with the intention of developing a much-needed community service hub for the community of West Linda. As many partner agencies and nonprofits and civic organizations excitedly started raising their hands, knowing that the county had this one-acre parcel, and expressing their interest in potentially developing and partnering on the site, the county wanted to first understand what was lacking in the community? What were residents looking for? And what would serve them best? And how could this one-acre parcel be best developed for the community of West Linda? So again, in 2022, your board approved a consultant contract with Housing Tools to manage outreach, engagement, and the analysis of current services. Then we ultimately drafted a project concept for implementation based on the study that was completed. And the funding for this study was also through Health and Human Services Cal Works Program and an MOU with Community Development. So the four pillars of this study were on human services, recreation, transportation, and facilities. Through a variety of community meetings, online surveys, and interviews with service providers and residents, we started to assess what the community was looking for. Some of these outreach tools that we used were not only standalone meetings held at the Cedar Lane Elementary School. So thank you so much for MJUSD and their partnership in that. But we also provided a number of flyers out to the community that were translated into three different languages, of course, English, Spanish, and Hmong. And then we also had a standalone website for the project, a couple screenshots here just for examples, that we pushed out into the community through social media, through in-person flyers, partner organizations, et cetera. And we really guided people to learn more about the project online and come join us in person to talk about what they wanted to see in their community. So the meat and potatoes of the study. Through this process, several themes and priorities were emerged. So under the pillar of human services was the need to create educational programs for youth and adults, a better access to healthcare services, and access to mental health support and childcare services. Under that pillar of recreation, we talked about increased youth and adult recreation opportunities, like indoor sport court and/or a center hub that facilitated organized sports. Under the pillar of facilities, it was really important to the community to create a gathering space or meeting rooms to host things like fitness classes, cooking classes, art workshops, et cetera. And under transportation, it was really important to the community to have access to healthy foods, multimodal transportation and walkability and transit options. Thus, those priorities, which I just mentioned, were then translated into what we would call like a menu of options. So things that are more tangible, as opposed to the aforementioned, were just kind of umbrella conceptual. This is more tangible, what the community really wanted to see. So some of those things would be like housing navigation services, extended school programs, tele or mobile health services, and community festivals and events. Those menu of options then had design elements, again, a little bit more tangible things. So like a multi-use meeting room, a computer lab, a library hub, or satellite school services, multi-use green space, indoor sports facilities, and in the element of transportation, shuttles or transit services. All right, moving on to how, what the next steps are and what the implementation would be. So now that we've concluded the needs assessment, which I just kind of ran you through the meat and potatoes of what the report said, we, the intention is for staff to take that needs assessment and that menu of options and put out a request for proposals open to all partner agencies, nonprofits, and community organizations. We would be looking for a lead agency to manage the site development, establish partnerships to facilitate the services and activities that I just mentioned, as well as develop and execute a continued community outreach and engagement plan to invite the community members to participate in the site that they had a hand in developing, and then also manage all site activities. At the direction of your board, the county may be willing to partner on the implementation funding for project design and construction, and furthermore, support in the pursuant of grants with that lead agency. So the amount of county funds that can be leveraged to complement the facility could be a portion of the ranking criteria. Also, the- Also, the county, with direction of your board, staff would recommend the leasing of the land so that we had the opportunity to control some of the timelines and contingencies for development to make sure the project continues to move forward as opposed to potentially deeding or actually selling the land. As far as a project timeline, here's just a quick visual of kind of where we were in November of 22, where we're at in the fall of 2023, and potentially where we could be at in the end of this calendar year, which would be bringing back to your board a request for proposal, a drafted request for proposal and permission to release that out to partner agencies. So what we're seeking here today is again, just a quick project update as well as any direction for your board that you'd like to provide on elements that were in the menu of option, menu of options or the design elements and or anything that you specifically would like to see in that request for proposal to be included and brought back. And again, we will continue to maintain that again standalone website. Here is the link and a QR code for that. So we do have that available to the community if they want to know what's happening with the project. And I will maintain information available online so that people can go back there and see what's happening in their community. That is all, thank you.
Any questions for the board?
So one of the meetings, Rachel, I appreciated the fact that you kind of reeled in the public a little bit and reminded them that it's a one acre parcel.
Yes, sir.
Not forty acres. So I think that was helpful. At one point, I forget who it was, but it seemed like we had a lead agency of sorts in the year past, years past. It provided a lot of these services that we're talking about, and I can't recall that organization. I don't know if you do or not.
I believe there was mention that Marysville Joint Unified had elements of similar services in the past. And and that was brought up at a conversation. There are elements that are similar that have been bolstered through Yuba County Office of Education and their expanding departments. And there is a, there are plans in development for Marysville Joint Unified in partnership with Yuba County Health and Human Services and YCOE to build wellness centers at some of the campuses. But we are very cognizant of that and aware that some of the asks in from the community and for service providers that were included in the needs assessment will likely be addressed at those wellness centers. So we're being very cognizant of that when drafting the RFP as well as reviewing the proposal so that there is not duplication of services in the community.
I, I guess that's my only question at the moment, but it's, I'm glad that you're reining them in a little bit on this for the, for the size of the project.
On the asks for the community needs, I saw babysitting childcare and I saw transportation, neither of which are well served with us having a piece of land because those are more service oriented. But did those translate in any way over to anything that we are providing in that menu of options? Or no, those were so service related, not location oriented that they didn't connect?
So if I understand the, the theme of your question is that what will be drafting the RFP to ask for as well as grading it upon is not only the ability of a lead agency to develop a site, but then to have either in-house services that are provided and or partners and letters of intent with partner agencies to provide those said services. So it's a both and.
Okay, so a senior center, for instance, would be fantastic. You mentioned having meeting rooms and that sort of thing. So that would fit into that niche of providing for a senior center. The lead agency would then be providing the supervision for that. And then the funding source for the building itself is separate than the services that are provided later. Both of those are going to be coming from the county or just the building will be coming from the county. And then something else will be providing the services through some sort of, what would their funding source be for the services afterwards? And we are paying for the building, is that accurate?
Let me try to part and parcel that one out. So in regard to the building and development and then ongoing funding, at the direction of your board, we could consider providing some implementation funding for the development and the construction, whether that's at whatever degree that would be, as well as ongoing funding. And again, at the, at your direction, we could take that back as staff to consider what would be reasonable to provide and where those funding mechanisms would come from. And then I apologize, there was a second part to your question.
Well, just, I guess my question is, is that the budget for this year was decreased because of income versus expenses. And so adding a large building on an acre for great services seems, is going to be problematic, right? And so what would be the alternative sources for funding? Is the lead agency bringing funding? Are they bringing grants? Are they going to build the facility? And then a secondary or corollary question would be, while we're waiting for that to materialize, can we just make it a green space? Because I thought that is one of the options is just, you know, a green space for people to use. I assume that's relatively cheap and then we have something going on until the next thing materializes.
Okay, thank you for repeating that. So in the first part to your question about, which I think originally was said, are we, are we paying for the building? And to my knowledge, I believe that is the intent in the proposals is that the lead agency would be applying for grant funding. We would partner with them on the site and we could provide potentially a portion of the development funding. But as far as the specifics of site development as well as construction funding, that source has not been identified and that would be part of the RFP process. In regard to your second comment or question about the green space that hasn't been identified or discussed as like an interim phase, but it's certainly a great recommendation and I'm happy to look at that a little bit further.
Thank you.
So one thing I see out, that coming out of this is you're, you have a good needs assessment. Excuse me? I didn't hear you. Oh, anybody else? Just me? So one thing good coming out of this is you have a good needs assessment, which means I guess there could be multiple lead agencies, not necessarily on that site, but close by that could maybe solve some of these issues.
I would agree with that. One of the examples to put that into practice is that if we had a lead agency that was more in the educational sphere and their expertise wasn't pop up healthcare services. There have been some of our, like Harmony Health, Ampli Health and Peachtree have all expressed interest to have pop off, pop up healthcare services and like their mobile vans to be contracted on site.
Yeah, thanks.
If I could through the chair, maybe to, maybe to help just distill this down. So, so the action item that Rachel's asking for is to authorize staff to move forward with a request for proposals for this site. And and really, at the end of the day, as, as Rachel's presentation outlined, there's, there, there's multiple services the community would like to see from that site. You're not going to have one single service provider more than likely do that. It'll have to be finding a lead service provider that can partner with others to provide as many of those services possible. So this RFP process, that, we're anticipating that it'll result in proposals that'll come forward and we're trying to, we'll, we'll rank them based on who provides the most amount of services for the least amount of expense to the county, for example. I, I believe that, that's where Rachel's trying to solicit some input, if there is any from the board on ranking criteria. Like for example, on the services provided, is there, of those services, is there one that would be ranked or weighted higher than than other services? Or do we give them all equal weight and it's more about who's providing the, the most services overall?
Well, I'd like to comment about that, you know, this is, this is well and fine. This is a study. But I think we have to realize that we have budget limitations and I think we have current projects in the county that need to be addressed before we expand to newer things. And as we grow, we can grow the projects. But I think that we really need to stabilize as a county. And because a lot of that is, is in the future. And I don't, don't really see any massive infusion of funds to be able to do most of those things. So I'm, you know, it's just, Tom has problems there and there are other problems in the, in the county right now, which I think we, we need to address before we, we go expand to such a larger project. That's, it's one person's feeling, one of a, one of five on a board. So I just, I think that we have to do this in a controlled manner that we've managed to do for, for many, many years. And we are, we're, we're expanding, but there's nowhere near enough funds to be able to even do studies on a lot of this stuff, so.
So.
That's one man's opinion.
Through the chair. In response to, to Kevin's question and maybe what staff is asking for with, with direction and priorities, I think from my standpoint, I would, I would put that back to the community if we can do that. So I don't know if our focus groups ranked or we tracked like how many people preferred one option versus another option. If we don't have that data, then maybe some additional meetings or questions back to the community would be my suggestion. And then also stakeholders from the standpoint of if, if we have existing county agencies that do some of these things, getting input from them as well on those needs and maybe working with that information to, to put together the scoring for the RFP. That's just maybe my, my suggestion.
Through the chair. So with everything that Gary just said, as the next step after that, I will move that we continue with the RFP process, specifically after gathering any data that's necessary to clarify those goals. And I would like to make specific in the motion that we look for an RFP that is going to actually be able to implement creative ideas such as childcare assistance or transportation, which I don't see how that would happen in any way. But if somebody else comes up with a better idea, I'm always open to somebody else being smarter than me. And then I would also like to look at that multi-use green space, assuming that is a cheap and not going to be any kind of budget burden as an interim until we do something that may be years away. But senior service, senior center, youth center, did I mention that yet? Yes, high priority, high priority. Thank you. That's my motion.
Supervisor Fuhrer, this is a, a presentation only with direction back.
That's my direction.
No motion is needed.
All right.
The green space sounds good. There we go, we got a start. Okay. We've got a budget meeting that.
Through, through the chair, I, yes, I was.
All right, okay. We have one more county department item, which is four seventy seven. Four seventy seven, okay.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that. As you are aware, CDSA has been successful in numerous grants in the West Linda area, including active transportation programs, state of good repair grants for sidewalks, bike lanes, drainage along Cedar Lane, Alicia Avenue, Garden Avenue, Feather River Boulevard. The projects are currently being constructed or near being constructed. Since there is not a well-defined drainage system in these areas, these projects, or this project is, excuse me. Project is currently, we have projects that are currently being constructed or nearing, near being constructed. Since there is not a well-defined drainage system for these projects to terminate into, Public Works staff determined the best route was to construct a detention basin along Cottonwood Avenue using an unutilized portion of Friendship Park property. This is a first phase only, includes drainage improvements such as a basin, excavation, storm drain installation and drainage structures. The engineer's estimate for this project was about $3.3 million. We did receive a total of eight bids. And with that, the Public Works Department recommends a Board of Supervisors Award Contract 2023 4275 to the apparent low responsive responsible bidder, which was Lund Construction in the total bid amount of $2,468,363.50 for the West Linda multi-base use basin Phase One project and authorize the chair to execute the contract upon review of county council and risk management. With that, I would like to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the board? Any questions from the public? Bring back the board for a motion.
Since you've deferred, I will, glad to make that motion. I'm excited about this construction project. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second? Any further comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I propose a five minute break. We'll adjourn, we'll resist and come back to you in five minutes.
Yubasutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com.
Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning planning, land use, environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notice, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to such hearing. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or group. Thank you.
All right. Are you ready?
Thank you, Chair. Sean Powers, Assistant County Administrator, represent the County Administrator's Office. Very pleased today to present our 2023-2024 final budget or final budget adjustments for the fiscal year. Before I get started, I want to definitely acknowledge the work of staff that actually gets us to this point. Michelle Logan in our office, and our two members, Scott and Jenna Shin. They definitely helped with all the very manual and hard work process to pull this together from the departments and let us present this to your board. So as we go through some of the changes, we do find ourselves in a better position than we were at proposed budget for we made the adjustments for the loss of contracts to the county. That was a significant revenue adjustment that we made those adjustments for. Our final budget is allowing us to maximize the fruits of that labor by making those cost savings that were necessary to structurally reset the budget. We do find ourselves with some additional revenue that we want to use the most fiscal responsible manner. We do agree with one time for one tie is a very good policy. We are going to focus on reserves and conveniences. Right now, those do need board policy right now, but we are going to request the board make an exception to those. Once again, we did this last year. It served us well. We want to continue to do that. It's focus on county cash flow. I'll go on them a little bit more on that in a minute. And also reduce some of our short-term borrowings, which is a good fiscal standpoint for the county. So we are very excited and also very terrified at the same time that we are looking at our new financial system to go live in October. Right now, that is projected. Again, best of both worlds on that. That's going to allow us to actually focus on implementing that system. So we are proposing not to do a mid-year process for this fiscal year to do any budget adjustments. We did that last year. It served us well for both time and efficiencies, focusing on our training for the system. We are looking forward to hopefully getting to a single budget process that we would adjust in June. This is a very ambitious goal. Our county's never been able to do that due to the time closing out our financial information at the end of the year. But like I said, it is a goal we'd like to get to one day. And along with our new financial system, the budget does not stop here with my presentation today. We will need to bring back some changes to our fiscal policies and our budget policies that have been pretty stale with our current financial system. Some of those go back to '06 and '08, and there needs to be some significant revision work in there. So your board will see those coming in the future. As we put our final budget changes together through Budget Workshop, we used our new strategic plan that your board recently adopted to kind of be our guiding light as we made some decisions on where to put our resources with our four pillars, just knowing that that was part of our guiding and also how it supports our priorities, which I'll touch on a little bit. So as we had a full day and a half through Budget Workshop, listening to fantastic presentations from all of the departments, our conservative approach at budget did allow us to say yes to some of those items that were requested. I'm going to go into this here. But most of our general fund departments did have some sort of request through the budget process as we went through workshop. We talked a lot about A-87 during the budget workshop. Your board did hear about some of those cost increases. Ironically, you did not hear about any of the decreases with some of the departments. But we do have a lot more work to do there on how and when the county builds for some of our internal services. That work's not going to stop with final budget. We did fill in fund a couple positions, and we have them outlined there. I'm not going to, although we felt were critical that we restored or added after our reductions from the ICE revenue. What resonated with your board during board workshop was a request from the District Attorney's Office for some extra help so Clint can do all that stuff that he just outlined in his other presentation. So we added that back in to support those efforts. Kind of showing where IT is going to ultimately end as our final reorganization of IT services. Budgetarily, we're going to formally move that into the administrative services umbrella. So that will pull that into that, and it will be, from a budget standpoint, part of that organization. With that also comes one amendment to the classification and salary for the Assistant Administrative Services Director. I want to note that that's the proper title right there as the Assistant Admin Services Director. Your staff report has a slightly different title. It's just the ordering of the wording on it. It's not a substantive change other than that's how it's listed right there. But the resolution for it is actually correct. So some of those changes that we heard during Budget Workshop, besides for our assistance with the DA was credit card acceptance and system integration. The county currently does accept credit cards, but that doesn't completely integrate to all the different systems that the county does utilize. So we want to focus some efforts there to provide some different business solutions for the different departments with some of the different platforms that we use. This is an effort to actually streamline the solutions and kind of get those things talking to each other. Public Defender, you just heard a contract adjustment on there. Here's the budget piece for it. And with the CAO's office, we have a couple different efforts that are going to be going through the County Administrator's Office. Some assistance with negotiation are with our Behavioral Health MOU, bringing in some outside resources and expertise to help us with that effort. Yuba Water Agency Grant for Broadband. This is a countywide EIR that allows those providers to come in a little bit quicker than the user. Mr. Scott in our office will be heading up. Our Department of State Hospitals diversion grant. State gave us a little bit of money to start having some meetings. We had our first meeting. We have a lot to talk about. This will continue. And this actually came up when talking to your Chair and Vice Chair Code Enforcement. Your board did take action in proposed budget to add additional funding for abatement. There was not an additional request for proposed, but we have some ordinances coming down the pipe later that your board will actually hear soon. So final budget, kind of what the sum of those couple of slides you saw before, added up to about roughly $1.6 million of additional general fund into those departments. One area we are looking to still keep and enhance, your board has taken this action in prior budgets, continue to fund into our UAL unfunded accrued liability, thus reducing our water agency board. Your board will recall, we only borrowed $9 million of our $13 million obligation from the water agency this year. Putting another $2.8 million into that will reduce our borrowing in the future. It's a very good fiscal policy for the future. The County Administrator's Office does have a goal that eventually we will not do that borrowing in the future simply because of the expense to the county. We're not here that. We're getting about halfway there. Again, this is a good policy for us. If anything radically ever changed, we definitely appreciate the assistance from the water agency to borrow if we need to. But right now, we are looking to reduce that. That's kind of our short game on our pension issue, our funding, but also our PARS 115 trust, as the board has done in previous years. This is our long game for our pension liability, sort of the 401K for the county, if you will, that we have a longer investment strategy that goes into a separate fund, UAL, and obligations for pension in the future, that we put that money in there, and we'd only pull that if we really, really needed it. Along with what I talked about, enhancing our reserves, contingency and economic certainty, we are proposing to sprinkle roughly a little over 800K between those pots. We keep hearing about all the wonderful news with the economy. We haven't heard if anything bad is going to happen yet, but this is saving for a rainy day in the future. So we can pull those funds if available, hopefully not. And kind of one epiphany we've had this year that we've always done in the past, that had us said, why haven't we done this in the past, is when we are in a better position for cash flow with the county, why not pay for all those obligations in January after our December property tax apportionment comes in? We usually do it right after budget, and it has kind of seemed, you don't have to pay those bills right off the bat. Let's do it actually when it's in the best fiscal position to actually do so. So we did, when going to proposed budget to kind of navigate the issue with the ICE revenue, we did assume a fund balance of roughly 5.6 million. While this may, our office is a little nervous. Historically, we actually do hit that. The good news is, we actually did hit that and exceed that. So that allowed us to weather that storm. But focusing on cash flow, once again, we did do this in the prior year, about half of what the amount that we had before. But to basically retain some funds in our general fund, because when we open our doors on July 1st, we have bills to place. So not starting from just a zero balance, we start from a little cash position, which actually is good for a business model, that allows us to actually have some funds in the bank that allows us not to go with what we call a negative balance, which is an interest expense to the county. Again, we get most of our revenue from property taxes when that hits in December. We typically, in working with the Otter's Office, we can go about, you know, 14, 15 million in the hole before we actually get to December payments. By keeping more cash in there, we're going to minimize that deficit, thus creating interest savings for the county. So kind of here's a snapshot of where things look like. If we had what we had a proposed with some of those actions, if we were to approve those, general fund reserves. We do have a slight correction on the reserves. There is an extra 35,000 in there. That was actually for a budget correction. That's not anything that your board needs to take action on, but just showing that we are going to make that contribution. But the balance would have just a little bit more than five million in it. Continencies, you can see where that change would move, and then they change from economic uncertainty, share part approve it. And again, that retained unappropriated general fund, keeping the fund for cash flow purposes. So as we went through the proposed changes for final budget, we are pleased to report that that hit six of your board's top 12 priorities for the year. It's not that the other things in the budget don't support that, but just the changes that we included at proposed budget does hit half your list for the year, while the regular standing proposed budget does touch on the other six, but we wanted to highlight them. So to kind of sum it up of where we get from final to proposed, started at roughly just over 300 million. We would end up at about 313, with ISF Internal Service Funds growing just modestly, getting to a grand total of 351 million. This represents about a 3.8% increase to the budget from proposed. So with that, I would be open to any questions from the board.
Questions for the board?
Last year was around 330. We did that where we added a lot of capital projects to the budget, and we completed many of those projects. There is summary budget in here, but it already is knocked out. So our budget's actually.
Okay. I'd like to open the public hearing. Forgot to do that. Any further question? No?
I just have a comment and a question through the chair. That unfunded pension liability or whatever, I know I keep bringing that up every time just because we get such a bad rap, and people don't understand that it's, we're borrowing the money and paying it back so we can get a discount and save the county money. I just wonder if, you know, it seems like we're in the day and age where we change the name of everything to make it sound better. Maybe we could change the name of unfunded to something else you guys could come up with that.
Oh, that's.
So the public could better understand what it is.
Public wonders what we're naming it this year. I think that, you know, it's, I call it Liza Lou, and, you know, it's, I think people understand when it was explained in the paper, which is very, very good for us. So.
I hope so. That was my only comment.
My only other comment is, is can we give Jeremy more money? No? Okay. Well, then I'll move that we adopt this budget and resolution for the change.
There's several options there. I appreciate your independence, and, you know, it's just, we have to do this according to oil here. So I'm.
Actually, through the chair, if I may, we actually have 10 individual items for your board's consideration to get us through.
And individual items? Okay.
We could do on a roll call, please.
Okay. All right. Which one is the first? What is approved? Oh, any public comment? Sorry about that. Okay. All right. Now, our first approval is required, approved fiscal year 2023 budget, final budget in the amount of 312 million. Is that, all right. So that's the first motion that we'll need from the board.
I'll make, I'll make a motion. We approve the final budget for fiscal year 2023-24 in the amount of 312,272,91.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is Airport Enterprise Funds in the amount of 1,226,273. And motion?
I'll move to approve the Airport Enterprise Funds in the amount of 1,226,273. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Item three is contribution to pension in the amount of 2,800,000 for cash, cash flow purposes. Need a motion? Hello?
I'll make a motion to approve the contribution to pension UAL 2,800,000 for cash flow purposes.
I'll second.
We have a second. Roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Contribution to economic uncertainty, $250,000. Is that?
So through the chairs, that item D is the next one on the slide in front of us. So I will move to put $300,000 in the general fund reserves.
Oh, okay. All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. All right. What have we got? Fund for general contingency? Is that next? Okay. I'll follow yours and not mine. All right. We need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we can contribute to contingencies 270,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Next item is fund for economic uncertainties. Need a motion? Seth?
Yes, I make that motion.
Yeah.
I'll second the fund for economic.
I think you gotta, you gotta say it's $250,000. I think you gotta, you gotta say it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay.
Did we do this the previous two years where we went through and did ten different items?
Well, this is what he's directing now. So that's the, that's the way it's gonna go.
I move that we fund economic uncertainties to the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the final fiscal budget year of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for Yuba County. I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fur?
Okay.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Item G, contribution to pars one fifteen trust, five hundred thousand dollars.
I'll move that we put five hundred thousand dollars as a contribution to the pars one fifteen trust.
We'll second it.
We have a motion and a second roll call.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fur?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Total internal service funds need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we put thirty-eight million, four hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars in the total internal service fund.
I went twenty-one.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fur?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Now we need to adopt budget, budget resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Motion?
I'll move to adopt the budget resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fur?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Item J, adopt human resources resolution. Need a motion? Motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we adopt human resources resolution, amending classification system, basic salary hourly schedule for assistant administrative services director.
Does this paper say? Okay.
I'll second.
We, we have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fur?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
You left out effective September one.
Hmm?
Need to amend the motion.
Which one? We're done?
As if I could chime in on that. Historically, we used to take this action item in two separate meetings. We combined it at this time, had to do it in one meeting, so we wouldn't have it come back for the second time. Thus, this being the longest action list that your board has to take on, but staff does appreciate.
Okay. We appreciate you taking, shortening the time. All right. So that.
I was just going to comment two things. I really appreciate having those action items as part of the presentation before us. And also, I really liked the format and style of the presentations. Can I get a copy of the template for that?
Yes, can.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we're at that time, board and staff member reports. We'll start with Mr. Blazer, Supervisor Blazer.
First of all, we have a lot of events in September. I'm not even going to list them all, but obviously.
Thank you.
Good. Obviously, the big one this weekend is the rodeo. So the cattle drive runs through town on Wednesday, and I think the, the opening ceremony of sorts is over a gee-wookie on Thursday, and then there's the whole stampede. I want to, would you like me to come back on this closing recognition?
If you want to recognize someone.
Okay, I'll go ahead. We want to, in closing, recognize in the memory of Josh, Josh Baggett, who was a farmer in the District Ten, who we lost just a few days ago way too early. So our sympathies go out to his family and also to his wife, Sarah, and her family relations, which are the Sodaro's in District Ten.
Thank you. Uh oh. I need to go back on four forty-three and close the public hearing. Sorry about that. We appreciate it. All right. Anything else? Done?
I'm done.
Okay. Seth?
Alaska has good weather and nice whales. We should get those here. So make that happen. The cleanup on Saturday went really well. Great community event. I hope that we can increase our outreach to the people so we can get more people involved, but went really well. Recology was great. The Air Force manager, Jason Coppin, was great. The five through off-road recovery group that went and picked up the disabled shut-ins was great. Everything worked out really well. The community task force for Olafhurst needs to recruit more people. So if you know anyone who is civically minded and wants to be active and not apathetic, please send them our way so we can increase the number of people involved with the community task force. And I again did the battle of the bands judging, and it was a lot of fun. So come out to their events on Friday night at the house next to the Viking. It's called the Tea Garden House. That's it. Upcoming stuff. There is a youth rally in Olafhurst over at the OPED Park on Powerline this Saturday. So please reach out to any youth and let them know three o'clock on should be lots of fun stuff, international rap artists and skateboarding teams and blah, blah, blah. So a lot of fun stuff happening out there this Saturday at the OPED Park. Hogs and Hoolas is on the twenty-third, great event. So if you enjoy dancing and drinking, which I think is most of us, then please get some tickets and come out to that. There's the Olafhurst food giveaway coming up. That'll be at, on the Powerline address as usual. So feel free to attend that. And I think you already mentioned the rodeo, so.
Lot going on, and I won't mention it all, but just a few items. So first of all, this Monday, last, last Monday was the tenth week of the Plumas Lake Community Walking MOI on Monday morning. So that was the commitment to Blue Zones, but the group wants to continue. So as long as the weather and the daylight hold out, we're going to continue doing that. So Monday morning, six thirty at Ufe Wood. Also, I want to thank community development, the sheriff, Linda Fire, OES, and RD seventy-four for participating in an emergency evacuation town hall for East Plumas Lake. Back on the thirtieth, we're going to be following that up with a safety fair for all of Plumas Lake that'll be coming up on October fourteenth and be combined with the second Saturday picnic in the park event, which will be the final picnic in the park of the year. Also, I wanted to thank Craig from Public Works. I had a constituent reach out to me. They live in a court that kind of dead ends, and there's a road just a short distance from that court. And so residents, rather than drive around, decided that they would use the landscaping as a cut through between the court and the road. And Public Works went out and put some boulders there to prevent that. And we got a shout out today from that resident on, on social media because it was only about a week ago that they reached out to me and we were able to address that issue within a week. So I know that's been my experience with county staff, and it really shows our yes to Yuba initiative, that if there aren't regulatory or financial or resource challenges, we get things done very, very quickly. So I just want to appreciate that, and I know that is the norm, and so it's greatly appreciated. Next week, I will be at RCRC, representing Yuba County, at their annual meeting. And then Supervisor Messick and I had an opportunity to go on the MJUSD facility tour last week on Friday. I know, I think a lot of the other supervisors already had a chance to do that. We were busy at the time, so it was great that they scheduled a second one and we were able to make it. And finally, I did want to close in memory today of Sam, Sam Dana. He unfortunately passed away in accident back on nine five and was the son of Steve Dana, who is a farmer here in Yuba County. So I know there's already a letter and I appreciate all the board members signing it. And that's it.
All right, John.
As Gary mentioned, we got to go on the MJUSD tour, but ours was a little different because we were in air-conditioned vans. You guys weren't hogby us. Got the special treatment. And I was going to mention to the food hub people, some of the schools, Olafhurst in particular, has a garden for their students and they're serving their fruits and vegetables there. So maybe these guys could maybe partner with them and, and add to that. This Friday is going to be a chamber commerce ribbon cutting at the Mountain Top Coffee Shop in Brownsville at one PM. Be some great raffle prizes there. I don't know if you guys, most of you have been to chamber functions. You drop a business card in, have prizes. So anyway, be a ribbon cutting for that. Friday night is sod busters. You know, sod busters is a community event fundraiser that supports people. I can't remember who does it right now, one of the Kiwanis or whatever, but I'll be there serving drinks in the bar between seven and eight, I think. So I'm guessing.
When is that?
Friday night.
Right.
It's down at the riverfront, you know, Rodeo Browns, Friday night sod busters.
Oh.
Saturday is the Marysville Police Association Dinner at the Elks Lodge. And also Saturday earlier in the day is end of summer event in Brownsville, the community event. We have music and, and food and things. So.
All right.
I'm going to stop right there.
Okay. Well, I did through last Thursday, presented proclamation to Captain Millian at his retirement ceremony at the sheriff's apartment, which was quite an honor. And that's it for me. Yeah. Counsel, anything?
Nothing from our offers, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Allen?
Yep, just two quick things. One, Rachel Abbott, who's out in the audience, not to be confused with Rachel Downs. So Rachel Abbott, who's your public information officer for the county, with the retirement of Russ Brown, and she was promoted up to that, that position. I've tasked Rachel with, to reach out to each of the board members to work on a project with Mary here to kind of improve the appearance here in the board chambers. And what we'd like to have is, is photos of each district so that we can represent, you know, when the public comes into the board chambers, they'll be able to see photos from District one through five here in the chambers. And so Rachel will be coordinating with each of you so that we have, you know, your input on photos that best represent the district you serve. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. The other is that October thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth, we're going to have an all-staff appreciation barbecue. Bad luck. No, no, don't be superstitious, right? That's, that was actually one of the potential themes, although I think we landed on something different.
Do we wear like hockey masks?
Yes. So, so Mary will, will coordinate with the board members on an appropriate theme for, for the board member attire on that day. But so October the thirteenth, so we're about a month out from that. But I wanted to make sure the board was aware and then also ask the board's permission. Last year, what we did was we had those offices that can close. The public, obviously, we can't close the jail and, and, you know, leave it undefended. But for the most part, offices, we would close them from eleven thirty to one thirty to give staff an opportunity to be able to participate in the event. So just wanted to make sure the board was okay with that, that closure timeframe like we did last year. Staff can be a, we can show some appreciation to staff down there.
All right.
October thirteenth, we'll, we'll close offices from eleven thirty to one thirty. We'll be serving food from noon to one, and we'll have games and raffle prizes and that type of thing. It'll be in the Marysville Pavilion, same as last year.
All right. I forgot one thing. I read the paper this morning, and I'm just glad that I'd like to thank staff, all of staff here to be, your results orientated rather than problem orientated. There are a couple articles and people didn't know how to do things, boat stop, this, that, and the other thing. But staff makes it easy to be up here because you're solution orientated. You find solutions to problems. We also have a public comment via Zoom. All right. Is he there?
Yes, through the chair. Name is Henry Abbe.
Yes. Mr. Abbe?
Hi, sorry. Can you hear me, Andy?
Yeah. Now I can.
Sorry about that. You know what? I've been waiting to, to do the, the hand raise thing. I wasn't quite sure which one because I had a comment on something that was for a closed meeting issue.
Okay.
Is that okay to do now?
Yeah. You're on. Showtime.
You know, I just want, I want to apologize also. I'm not able to make it there in person. I've been finding a pretty bad bug the last couple of days. I don't want to bring it, spread it around. So I'm doing it via Zoom now. So I wanted to bring up that regarding the personnel matter, and make sure that you're aware that you as a board, you have the ability to rehear that matter. You could do it via reading the transcripts from the hearing and rendering your own decision based on those transcripts. I would like to respect the request that that be done, that the board take that on. I think that if you do, in that testimony, you'll see some, some strange speculation along lines of, you know, there being a second suspect made good his escape type comments, comments and statements that an outstanding armed suspect with a gun hiding in the dark in a field isn't really a threat. You'd be able to read statements regarding the circumstances, the danger that victims and deputies experienced that night. And, but you also see that, you know, nobody, not a single person in the whole investigation felt that it was necessary to go out to that scene. They never wanted to look at it for themselves. The ten-minute drive, they didn't feel it was necessary to, to experience the field, the fence line, the surrounding areas. They didn't attempt to, you know, as it were, put themselves in, in our shoes. You know, even with the convenience and the safety of going out there, not an active call, just in the, in the daylight. You'll also see that no one read or listened to the interviews of the victims that were on scene that night. They were able to describe the scene and what it was like that night. But, and I'm not quite sure why, but, you know, the undersheriff, the sheriff, their expert, I guess they didn't feel their statements for the victims were worth hearing. But I would hope that you guys as a board think that their experiences and their insights that night are relevant. Maybe you'd like to be the first people, you know, who have the ability to make decisions or pass judgment to, to be able to hear what those victims had to say. Maybe you would care to drive out there and see for yourself what we went through that night. Again, I implore that you read the transcripts and listen to what those honest, hardworking citizens had to say. And, and take into account not just what those citizens that were there then I had to say, but, you know, twelve other citizens were able to hear the details of this whole incident. You know, they deliberated for only ten minutes before coming to unanimous decision they're not guilty. They believe that I acted within legal scope by duties and authority. And, and I hope that you would take that into account as well. I understand that those transcripts are a pretty significant amount of reading. And if you guys would like to take the time to do so and read it and, and digest all that, I have no issue waiving the time restrictions, laying it out in the MOU in order to provide you whatever time that you would need. And, and at least, please read Brett Sherman's closing arguments regarding this incident. It'll give you a good description of, of what, what happened and what this case entails. And it provides a lot of notations in it so that you can easily go and check those facts and, and understand there is a supporting fact for the reason why we believe that reinstatement would be the right course of action in this matter. And I, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. So that being said, we're going to recess, close session. You should be able to talk. All right.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking. outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com.